Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September tenth, of two thousand and twenty-four. With me today, I have Don Schwenker, Lynn Flago, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors. Alisa Smith is our county auditor.
Good morning.
Uh, Bjorn is here. Bjorn Beck with IT. Uh, Luanne is our executive assistants in the background here. And first on our agenda this morning is Mr. Jaden Chekel, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Jayden.
Uh, first thing on the agenda is a couple of utility permits. Both of them are for the Coca-Cola Valley. The first one is for just Boring, a new electrical service underneath Thirteenth Street for a new home. They're boring it, so not open trenching, so we do not see any issues with it. So on this first one for Thirteenth Street, we recommend approval.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the utility permit for M V E C on Thirteenth Street Boring as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Second one for Coca-Cola Valley is on three hundred and seven, three hundred and seventeenth Street, uh, just north of Lamont. Uh, there's just an existing, uh, overhead line. They're just replacing some poles and placing a couple of new ones on that existing line. So essentially just maintenance work. So, uh, recommend approval on that one as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the right-of-way utility permit for M V E C on three hundred and seventeenth Street, uh, as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Uh, next is some discussion on five hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue. It's a Level C over by the Sebula area on the east side of the county. Uh, so a little backstory, about a year and a half ago, um, one of the landowners called asking about, uh, where to put a fence if he were to clear some trees. Where to put the fence back? And I stated that it has to be thirty-three foot from center of road. So to, you know, right of the right-of-way, that's a minimum. Um, long story short, the fence got installed within the right-of-way and near the, quite near the road. Uh, and some of the other landowners, the, some of the other adjacent landowners, uh, are in not favor of where that fence is. And I stated at that time, I really didn't want to send a letter regarding that because on two reasons, I guess. If I were to send a letter to the one landlord who put the fence in, uh, I wanted to make sure at first that he didn't. Who wants to say he doesn't come and say, well, one of the adjacent property owners, their fence is in the right-of-way too. Why don't you send them a letter? So I guess rather than just create more headaches, I'm like, if I'm gonna send a letter to one person on the road, I'm just gonna send it to all to just be, I guess, in my opinion, fair to everybody. I had our staff go out last week and do a topographic survey of that road, center of road, the edge of road. And my juice is Level C road, so it is a narrower road to establish what the existing right-of-way is. And they also shot in through the entire Level C, uh, the existing fences within that area. So what I gave on your desk are copies of, and what we get pulled up on the screen here is a plan sheet showing those, the results, I guess, of that topographic survey. So what's in blue or what's showing up on the screen is a really faded blue color is the sixty-six foot width. What's in red are all the fences and, you know, as, uh, one property that is the one that called a year and a half ago about where to put it is this property here. So this is the fence that got installed within the right-of-way. And it's at a larger scale, so I know it might be hard to see where that existing road is, but the existing road is indicated by the dash lines up there. But it is within the right-of-way. I mean, there's no question about.
Am I correct in saying, Jayden, that this portion of the road is gated?
It, it is. And Bjorn, can you pan, uh, to the, or show more to the left? Because what you'll see here is we did shoot the gates as well that get into the Level C. So, uh, just off the screen would be what's Level B. And all this is Level C. So those are the gates. We shot the gate hole opening, if you will, or what I call the gate hole, uh, between the two posts that get into the Level C. And that distance is just for purposes, just say twenty-two point six feet.
So road top width. I mean, your paved roads twenty-two feet, correct?
Yes, or yeah, paved road and the, paved travel lanes on a paved road are twenty-two foot wide. Uh, so I guess bringing it forward to see how you guys really want our office to proceed.
So the.
Been pushing us to send letters and I, to be honest, like I said, I haven't.
In my opinion.
So the landowner that is complaining about the fence um, also has a fence in the right-of-way?
According to our topographic survey, yes. And that, there is other property owners on that stretch too that have it. And yeah, it's the one installed at where it shouldn't be, but I guess we have addressed fence issues in the past and where, when we do that, it's as it really, really becomes a problem for our department. Like, do you remember probably a year ago when there was the fence that was on the edge of the row of our Level A?
I do.
We couldn't grade the road.
Extended period of time.
So, I mean, there's.
So as we dealt with fence issues in the past, they've always been on a case-by-case basis. Um, I have a gentleman back here. Would you like to speak or approach the board?
Yes, please.
Would you come forward and state your name?
My name is Travis Woodhurst. Um, I am actually the landlord here, uh, that's adjacent there.
Yeah.
So I do have a land survey. Um, according to my survey, my fence was placed directly on the property and that was done with River City fencing. Uh, or not River City fencing, River City surveying. Uh, it did say that with the right-of-way. Um, I have a gate hole to the far side of that screen there that I'm looking at.
But.
Um, I can't, I can't get in and out of that gate hole with any equipment due to the, his fence across the way. When I try to make the swing, I've actually had to have our gate hole all dug out, um, trees wide and everything, just to try to maintain what I can make the swing. Because previously the fence was not in that location. I do have, um, the landowner or the, the leasing that used to lease the property below that, um, that were in question. He, or should he have been willing to testify, say where the old fence used to be? I understand, um, fences, those fences on the other side have been there for fifty-plus years. Um, the previous one, you know, it was said to the landlord before he put the fence in that he needed to be thirty-three feet from the center of the road. He obviously did not comply with what you guys have asked for, what the office and rules are for a new existing fence. Um, he has bulldozed everything. And on the far side, closest to where the, um, your guys' gate for the Level C spot was, you can see how close that fence gets to the road. It basically has pushed that road over to our side just to maintain. When we come down the road, instead of it being straight like it used to, we actually have to veer to one side to go around his fence line. Um, I've asked Jayden, um, numerous times last spring, I asked Jayden, or fall, I mean, what our plan was to relocate that fence. Um, I was told at that time that it was frozen, things were freezing up, that we would do it in spring. So come spring, I had called back, still no result after the spring. Then I was told that if we do it to one, we gotta do it for all. So, um, I do know that there is a very large sum, um, lawsuit that is actually involved with the same situation. Not with me personally, um, but there is between landowners out there that is actually involved with this. At this time, it's really all.
And this is maintained to Level C just for access for like Travis and them or?
Yeah, so here, there was a resolution that was passed back in two thousand and twenty-two that states the maintenance, uh, of that Level C road, essentially blading, no blading or dragging will be performed on a regular basis. There's no ice removal. Snow and ice will not be removed or the road surface will be sand or salted. Uh, just skip through some of this, like weeds, trees and brush, mowing or spraying weeds, cutting brush and tree removal will not be performed on a regular basis as footside distances will not be maintained. Uh, for uniform width of the road, a uniform width for travel course in the road will not be maintained. Uh, that's just to say we won't maintain a uniform width, you know? But to answer your question, yes, this is a Level C.
If I remember correctly too, Jayden, there is a bridge on that road.
There is to the.
Not the best of shape. And I stated at that time, if you guys wanted to gate that thing and go to Level C, we are not going to maintain that bridge or replace it.
Yeah, the bridge is further to the north.
But it is in inside the gate.
It is in the gated Level C part.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't want to start talking litigation and testifying and all that. I don't know if that's all necessary. I, you know, if that's the case, well, then, you know, maybe we'll just stay out of it, let the courts decide. But, you know, is it a case where honestly, how many times do we go in and out of there? Is it a case where we could move the fence back where the gate is and get in and out of it? Does he have the same issue? It appears it's a same distance from his driveway to get into that, uh, agricultural field as it is yours. Is he getting in and out without an issue? Or is it a case where you pull it across and back up? Is it a, is it a major issue that we need to? I mean, I'd have to go look at it first before I made any decision. I've walked that road when we put the Level C up in the mud, in the mud and, you know.
And there is a huge washout on that road that our guys are planning to tackle this week. On that, that's farther north than here.
My recollection of the road was more of, at the time when we put the gates up was a, a hunting issue, if I remember correctly. You know, and.
And if I, so if we send a letter to, if he, there's a chance he goes, what if he just, lets the letter, throws it away and, you know, is it worth pursuing further than two? Because.
So what would, what would be the case to pursue it? I mean, to, would we pull the fence out or would we send a letter and say on this date like we did the other one and say, hey, we're gonna pull the post?
It'd be Iowa code, yes, if they don't remove it.
So then they, they could either leave it out or put it back in or whatever. I mean, I hate to see something come to that effect. I mean, I would.
Do they get billed for the labor?
Yes, it would get put on there. If they don't pay it, I believe it gets assessed on their taxes, I do believe. But there's an Iowa code that states all that. And I did talk to the county attorney a little bit about it yesterday. And, yeah, he agreed that if we send one letter, just send it to all and send one letter with all their names, you know? The one letter just wouldn't be addressed to each, or each individual person. You would have every person's name who got the letter.
I mean, I could travel this county all over a lot of roads and there's not, there's a lot of fences that are not within the outside perimeter of thirty, thirty-three feet from center. But again, if you say you're on your property line, but your property line, if I'm correct, you own to the center of the road, but it's, it's a right-of-way of the county. So I don't know that you say you're on your property line if it's surveyed, but I, I, you know, you guys are neighbors. You've got to get along.
So, um, with the survey, he did state, um, my property line does go basically like you said to the center of the road. But he did do that offset up thirty-three feet per, and then that's where my pens are. Because like he said, you can't do anything beyond that point to begin with. So that's where it is. And my fence is directly on that line currently. Um, I know this kind of shows I could be a little off. But according to the survey, we're right on it. The one across the road is and I'm not, I'm not trying to say that, you know, I think that he needs to be thirty-three feet off the center of the road. Don't get me wrong, like it isn't, I'm, I'm passable. But it just made it difficult for all of us to do anything. Like I said, ask Jayden. So if I come out of my gate wall and let's say, um, because I almost tipped over a A rack coming out of the gate. If it tips over, takes out his fence, who's responsible? Who's responsible for damages? Is that me? Is that you guys? Is that him? Because I can't basically maintain. It's your guys' right-of-way. I don't know who's responsible for things like that, or if I accidentally hit the fence for whatever reason.
So again, I'm gonna try to look for a minimal solution. Is the gate hole widened up? Would it help to have the gate hole wider? Would it help to have the fence set back at the gate hole? Uh, what's a reasonable solution here without?
By gate hole, do you mean, uh, this gate hole or do you mean the Level C?
No, I'm talking the gate hole, yeah.
Yeah, but when you first come into there before, before, long before you get there, if the fence is close enough to the road, as Travis is stating, that it's actually starting to move the road.
Have to actually.
I, I gotta see it.
Oh, but.
And, and like you said about the gate hole, um, the, his gate hole or that gate hole used to actually be straight in line with our gate hole. Um, when they did the re-fencing, it actually did get shifted down a little bit. Like I said to Jayden, I know there was some trees and stuff like that along that road that, you know, were always kind of hindered. Um, but when we would come out of it, we could utilize that other gate hole, which is in your guys' right-of-way. Make that swing where we can come out of our, our, um, field straight out. Well, now his fence is so close to the road, his gate is actually moved to the north that we aren't unable to do that. And that's where, like I said, I kid you not, I was three foot off the ground the entire of the A rack, just when I was trying to make the turn out of there. Um, so I just don't, for one, I don't want to be responsible for damages on his side, my side, what happens to my equipment.
Okay, so, um, I guess at this point, my status would be I need to inspect personally, take this with and personally look at it, I guess. Maybe talk to both sides. Um, did you sign in Travis?
Isn't it?
If you want to leave your number, is that possible with the office? I, I don't know whatever about you guys' thoughts are. Questions for Trav, are for, uh, Travis or Jayden? Does somebody else want to speak? Nay or yea? No? Any questions for Travis or Jayden or what's your thoughts?
Do you guys keep the gate locked at the Level C part?
Uh, we try to, uh, I know the other landowners, they go down quite often. That's just kind of a, the one on the lower side, uh, well, we call it the lower side, like the north side is always locked. The other one kind of goes back and forth because he has, this farmer here has a lot of, like, he does a lot of goat activity and stuff, so he's always up there watering. So I don't really know what he does on a daily day basis.
I think a look at it would be good, but.
I think to look at it, but to me, if we're gonna send out a letter to one, I'm gonna expect all would be mine.
And we started this when we did the road, when we had the fence moved on, what was it, two, sixteen or something? I mean.
I mean, I just, I just want to bring forward to you guys finally, because I guess if I send a letter, there could be some pushback that eventually could may reach you guys anyways. So I might as well have these discussions now, because.
Okay, so.
I don't know.
I'm not for sure. We need to pick the beehive, um, throughout the county for, for a situation, you know, again, I hope neighbors are good enough to get along and come up with a resolution. So let's, uh, let's do this. Let's take a look and we'll have conversations if we can or may with the landowners and, uh, go from there. Is, is there an issue of directly, uh, because of harvest right now that needs to be addressed or?
Uh, at this time, no, uh, due to it being a hayfield, we've been in there a few times.
Okay, so you're not done for the season. Is the one across the, uh, is the landowner across also hay? It looks, is that?
Uh, he, he's changed everything over there. It's actually like, uh, basically a pasture now for nothing but coats and stuff. Um, the only thing I will say too is I've actually been harassed at my own residence by the landowners across the way. Um, due to this, I've expressed that a few times. Um, you know, I've just basically walked away from it due to, I don't want the conflict. I don't want the issues, but I do know there's gonna be a lot of pushback across the way.
Okay, so what, what, we have no authority over what happened there, but if you called law, I know that happens, okay. Any other questions? I, I guess I would like to take a look at it and see if I can have conversations with either side and resolve peacefully here without pulling post and putting a fence in. Jayden, your thoughts? That's okay. Yep, that's alright. Let's move on.
Uh, that's it for our agenda. I can give you an update on construction, drive, lift, uh, one eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge. They started driving pile last week, so the pile for the south pier has all been driven. Um, Y sixty-one, that's been completed. Day labors are expected to start here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the first day labor, that is, on one thirty-sixth Street.
Okay, when you say day labor, now these are concrete decks, correct?
Correct, yep.
So what, what is it involved for our personnel?
Uh, we basically will get the rock, haul the rock when it's all.
Okay, so we don't do any tear out or bits blank, all that kind of stuff or what?
No, well, once the contractor tears it out, he stacks off to the side and our guys will come, our department will come and haul it to our shop. Like the wood blanking and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll salvage that and if it's.
So we don't want the new abutment in?
No, no.
Yeah?
Um, uh, and our Z fifteen fog seal, the pavement markings for that are getting applied as we speak. So that'll.
Been twenty-one days?
Hmm, yep.
Five, five, one day fly by anything.
So that'll, that project will be finished after today and our annual pavement markings are occurring this week as well, countywide, so.
I see it. I met a truck over here at the intersection and the back tire was yellow, so I figured. Um, yeah, no, that, again, that project and what, what the fog seal was, what road is it called?
Uh, Z fifteen or the three hundred and sixty-second Avenue.
So I did call to another city council member last night about it and I guess they weren't quite aware of, you know, they got, they knew where the city limit was, but was unsure. So we can coordinate with maybe next year when that comes into Iron Bridge and.
Yeah, once we, once that project is let and we award, or is awarded to whatever contractor, we can definitely forward that information on to the city of Springbrook to have them. They still choose to coordinate with them when they're in here, like to mobilize, hey, we want, can you fog seal this for us?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess we want, you know, like you said, we want to be good neighbors too, so. All right, well, appreciate the update.
Yeah, that's all I had, yeah.
You got signatures, Lisa, there?
I certainly do.
Where we at on the rebels?
Retrieval. The guy, we have two crews going. They have finished in the Preston and Sterling area yesterday. So that retriever and packer is now getting put over this way to start doing like the Baldwin and Iron Hill territory. Uh, the other crew is working up in, uh, like, near Iron Hill too, for that matter, like Street Cemeteries, Hock Gary Owen Road, that area up there. Uh, it is getting dry. Hard to believe. We had rain on somewhere on, but it's dry. But, uh, the minimal material that we're bringing in, it's not as, as last year. And we, we've related to the guys that if it does start to get too powder or too dry, we're not doing anything, you know, just, just stop. And we can tackle again as we get a little more moisture, but we have, don't know the exact mileage, but the last three weeks of rent, two crews has caught us up substantially.
So you, we're gonna get close and we don't know, uh, the scheduled as this year was proposed, you don't know if that's gonna get company.
I don't, I don't know. I don't think so.
You're still looking.
By one rule, it'd be for, we'll do, we'll tackle right away. If, worst case scenario, we'll tackle it right away.
You tell me two sixteenth, it's probably, I don't know.
I mean, it, it just depends on the fall.
Yeah, I get it.
Because what we ran into last year, when we, would we push it into late October?
I don't remember. I know we had, yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to push it that far, but, but Rick, Rick and I have talked in that first week in October, if the weather's still good, we'd go till then. So.
Yeah. So, uh, you guys do what you need to do and I appreciate, uh, everything you're doing. Like I said, I had some good, heard some good comments.
I would ask, because can we get this put on next week's meeting? So, yeah, it gives us a week to go look at it and we can make a decision because they took time out of their, uh, the data command and that'll also give Jayden a, you know, a direction or whatever, so.
Sure.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Your office has come along?
Yep.
A little refreshing. Okay, are there any, uh, visitors or citizens, uh, either online or here personally that would like to address the board today? Is that our Lori on there? Okay, um, hearing none. We'll move on to Becky Chapin, our Director of Human Resources. Good morning.
Couple more staffing changes for you this morning for the Sheriff's Department. So we have a full-time jailer, John, who he has resigned his full-time position as a jailer. Um, he's actually been deployed and will he, are you?
You have, is that the only one you have there or is that?
Yeah.
That bothers on the email?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
So John Mickle with a full-time jailer with us, he's been deployed. Um, he has resigned his full-time employment with Jackson County. Um, he will be kind of pursuing other options once he returns from deployment. Though just as a standard, I would ask for a motion to accept the resignation of John Mickle effective August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Almost.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve, uh, with regrets, the regulation of John Mickle. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
And then with that full-time resignation, that leaves a full-time opening, which will be filled by promoting one of our, we only have one current part, permanent part-time position in the jail. Um, Amy Oresborn is our current part-time and she will be going to full-time. I would ask for a motion to approve Amy Oresborn going from part-time to full-time effective September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Almost.
Very good. Uh, motion second to approve, uh, Amy Oresborn as go, uh, full-time as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Which that promotion then left the part-time vacancy open. Um, we do have a current PRN jailer, Dylan Said. Um, the Sheriff's Department has offered him the permanent part-time position that Amy will be vacating. So I would ask for a motion to approve Dylan Said going from PRN to permanent part-time effective September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Motion and second to approve Dylan Said as a part-time, um, dealer as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
And then I know Brent has reached out wanting to have a meeting just to discuss staffing levels in general. Um, just so you guys are aware, when you see this, we're gonna go ahead and start recruitment ads just for full-time, part-time and PRN. So we can start getting applications to come in. And then once those numbers are decided, they will determine what positions they have to fill. Um, so that way at least we can, like I said, start taking applications and figure from there. So when you see that ad, that's fine.
Well, reading that, uh, all and catching up with it, it appears that we're a little behind in having some PRNs and either part-times. And I don't know if that's the case of availability of.
Here are very hard because they're just on call.
Yeah, yeah, I could see that being an issue.
Um.
Even part-time, I can see being an issue.
Yeah.
Um, but again, um, I guess we didn't know at the time when we were gonna open a new facility, but we're getting much closer.
I love the new budget. We approved four, three, coming full-time.
And there one more permanent part-time.
Have they been filled?
No.
No.
Because we'll just start to recruit for those now.
Good.
Because I don't know how much training, but again, a new facility, we're gonna, it's gonna be, um, learn on the run.
Yeah, they're actually, they kind of, I mean, we might be a little bit behind the ball, but having the cards fall where they will train in the new facility is actually better than having three or four people in that facility. Because everything is changing over there, the whole processes, the electronics, the bookings, all of that is changing. And Andrew does their forty-hour jail school. Now here, we used to have to send them all out to the I L E A. So if we were to start three full-time on the same day, they can all have that done at the same time and progress into the training, so.
So repeat that again, there's, you said Andrew does all the training for the forty hours.
He's one of the only jail administrators on the state Bible that's certified to do the forty-hour required course. So he has been doing all of our PRNs and new hires. He has been.
So that's over and above administration duties and.
Yeah, he's got the course assignments that are required by the I L E A and he's the one that handles that.
Yeah, I would say we certainly need to put it out there, you know, what we get for prospective employees is another thing, but we need to have it out there. Yeah, we're much closer to, um, trying this new facility, anyway.
Yeah. So, yeah, you'll see that ad and once you guys have the, and have the discussion about.
So I, I did see the, um, email regarding the work session and I, I, I assume we can still have work sessions, correct?
You can have work sessions, yes. The question is when your work sessions are intended for somebody to present information and for you to ask questions. They're not for anybody to deliberate about what or what the outcome of that meeting is going to be.
Well, that's the way we've always had them is we've always had them.
If there's a call from the board, if there's a calling of the board, there needs to be minutes.
That's the new requirement of the work sessions, right?
It's not new. Anytime there's a call from the board and there's a discussion, there has to be minutes.
I thought this last session, there was something come up about required. It could have been.
I think there's just confusion. I mean, what, whatever you want to call it, during a meeting, you convene the meeting, you take, you make motions, you make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, but there's no action.
Yeah.
Anything like that taken in a work session.
If you're deliberating about policy procedures, then you are in a meeting, so the air on the side of caution as to what you call it and what your minutes all entail.
Um, again, if, if we can set something up to, that would suffice Brent and all of us, that we can all be there, that would be.
I know Jim was off this week, so he was gonna email him out of the date next week, I don't know if that was Wednesday or Thursday, or what it was, or whatever that is, I told him I'd be available all next week.
Yeah, no, I mean, if that's a possibility, we could do it.
I think Jim has gone till Wednesday. I think was the reason, but maybe. And he was open to prior to Jim too, so if Tuesday works, I'm sure that would be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's just conversation.
Jim had been having conversations with Delbert, all staffing levels and some of the assessments.
I'm sure he's on board with, with everything that's, he's usually in tune with what's going on, so. Yep, well, you do that.
We'll get the ad out there, we'll talk about it next week or whatever, we'll open it.
Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Lori Rollins, Jackson County Administrator. And you brought Sidekick?
I did.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attempt this.
Very good.
It was good? Good enough? We appreciate it, good morning.
Okay, good morning. As you know, you guys enacted a moratorium on utility scale. Battery storage and utility scale solar earlier this year. That moratorium expires October second. So it was in, it was January, what was enacted for nine months. The goal was we would start working on these drafts with my zoning commission. When we finish the wind energy conversion system ordinance, which was slated for March or April, which would have. Had us, you know, finishing this on time, we haven't started this yet for obvious reasons. And would need an extension, um, to the resolution. I have suggested a date of extending it to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, just for the fact that that's where you guys left. The wind energy ordinance.
So with the wind energy ordinance still out there and a lot of discussion, information that we're still gathering. Um, I'm assuming we have not, and of course, we have not gathered enough information on battery storage or large.
We haven't started this, my, my attention's been elsewhere.
I make a motion to approve the moratorium through June thirtieth to twenty-five for both.
I have a motion and a second to approve to extend the moratorium to June. End of June of twenty-five. For your skill, utility scale solar and for battery storage facilities.
Question is that long enough? Are you approving both resolutions or just one?
He approved, he said both.
But I made the motion to do both.
You want him, would you like him separate?
They're, they are separate resolutions.
If we have them as a separate resolution, we could do one at a time, so.
Extend the moratorium for the utility scale solar energy through June thirtieth to twenty-five.
So I have a motion and a second to amend the first motion to a. Motion to extend the moratorium on the utility scale solar. Till June, end of June on twenty twenty-five. As presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
My question before we do that.
I'm sorry, any further discussion?
Is, is that long enough? If not, you guys have the.
We have the opportunity to extend it.
Extend it, the goal, I can kind of give you an idea of what, the, where the commission is on the streets. They're looking to do a public hearing in October. Uh, the draft that I'm working on now will be final draft. It will go to public hearing through the board, or through the zoning commission next, next meeting. And as I will be putting to you guys in October. Late October.
You're talking the window.
The wind. So that will leave them open, they need a break though, they've. They're, they're just burnt, they're just burnt out.
I get it, and it's, it's very controversial and it's, um, ongoing information and. Dye secting and, yeah, whatnot, if you will.
Right, so, uh, they'll probably resume it. Uh, working on the, the wind utility scale solar. I don't know if they're resuming in, in October, or excuse me, in, uh, December, uh. In January for sure, that, that'll be their call. Uh, what kind of a break they need, other than if they get a meeting for. Uh, other zoning cases such as subdivision plots or rezoning. But it could be enough time. Um, although I understand there's just as much controversy with this as there is the other. And we might wanna do our process just a little bit different than we did in the past. Uh, I can see us wanting to do public hearings before we even start. You know, to get where the public wants to go, and we didn't do that with the wind. Um, you know, get some feedback from the pub, from the public, what are they looking to see out of this ordinance? And, and then start crafting our ordinance off that. Just a thought, just from seeing.
So I said in the last meeting I attended, that there were some disgruntled people that couldn't speak in a meeting. There was some, uh, comment made by a board member saying that it was nice to see everybody, wishing that they were here a year ago. Um, I personally feel there should always be a little spot for, um, public comment. It can be limited. You know, ours are not to exceed three minutes, maybe the overall time cannot be exceed fifteen minutes. I know a lot of time you get repetition in those, so. In the past, the way I dealt with it, if anybody's got anything different to say, please stand up. If you have many people agree with this person, raise your hand up, okay, we heard it, we counted, we're, we're good. But, uh, even if it's late in the game. If we didn't have the public hearings ahead of time, I feel there should always be at least some public.
I really would like to see us before we wrap up with wind even to have an open forum deal like. Was held in Clinton County, just so we can. Make sure we're kind of getting all the issues. That are there. You can address all the issues that are there. In a true mind fashion, and I think the way the commission has written their ord, written the ordinance. Addresses all the issues in one concise move. But I, I think the public, I think we need to hear what they're saying. Well, that's what next month is gonna, supposed to be with. You know, the public, the public forum, the public input session, uh. But, well, the commission and, and I, I work under my commission, whatever they tell me, if they tell me no public input. That's what goes in the agenda, so I don't drive that, they do, so, but I can relay that information. Um, what we are gonna do is the public input session, I'm currently working on a larger venue. For that meeting, I'm hoping to have that shored up by the end of the week. Uh, we have a couple options in mind, um, one is together we build. Uh, and if we have to move it to Boyer, that's a potential, I have a phone call up to Onward. And we've batted around the idea also of the Timber Center, but we've kind of backed off that, just. Be, it's a great location, but. A public meeting of this volatility and the possibility of alcohol, we just. My, I, my one, well, my chairperson's like, oh, that scares me. So, that would be a great venue, we would love it there, but we're, for other reasons, it's probably. Gonna be better not there. Uh, so I am investigating those other places for that meeting to accommodate a couple hundred people.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to the vote, we still have a motion on the table. Um, to extend the moratorium on the utility scale solar to end of June of twenty twenty-five. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. And I would also like to thank the commission for the work they've done. I know it's very contentious, we've had a ton of information brought forward to us. Either for or against, and it is very contentious, and they're doing the best they can, so, listen again, public. This is not easy, and it doesn't pay very well.
It's a volunteer board.
So, I'm just saying, be patient. Um, there are citizens just like you and I, and taxpayers also, so we're trying to make the best decisions that we can for Jackson County. And we appreciate what they're doing, and I know it's very hard. In a meeting like that to let everyone speak when it's contentious, because one thing leads to another, so. Let's have a balance and, uh, see what we can do.
Yeah, and, and. There was a lot of good comments made at, yeah, the one that was held in Clinton about what Jackson County was working on. Yeah, um, I'd like the board to know that, too. Oh, sure, uh, the one thing too, we were talking about public comments in advance. To where we wanna drive this, we, we did not do that with the wind, I wish we would have. Uh, however, they weren't, no one was paying attention, so it really wouldn't have the same output, I mean, you know. Nothing, yeah, nothing be different, but, you know, at least we would have had it and, um, but, anyway.
Probably, maybe try a sign and stand around the corner somewhere. Announcing all your information. It's up to get it out to the public.
It is.
I would also make a motion to, uh, extend the moratorium for the utility scale battery energy storage till June thirtieth to twenty-five.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to extend the moratorium for the battery storage facilities until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Any further comment? Concerns? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Uh, last time I was in here, oh, thank you, by the way, uh, the last time I was in here, we talked a little bit about. Um, our rewrite of an ordinance, the zoning commission, um, in the August meeting, in the August meeting agreed. That our ordinance needs to be updated, our regular zoning ordinance. Uh, and here, I'll give you a couple examples of just, well, definitions are. Not always where I need them, they're not there at all, there's certain things that describes a certain activity, but doesn't provide a definition. We need to work on our definitions in that ordinance. Had a phone call yesterday, some people are looking at building a rural wedding venue. Well, we have nothing in our ordinance, in our A one that would be a special exception. Nothing in our C one, which is highway commercial, which our highway commercial is. So limited, it doesn't cover. A lot of that business endeavors that I would consider happening or things that are popular these days. Uh, so that really needs to be addressed. Um, another thing I'd like to move forward with, and we had talked about it a little bit. Um, and that's the data mining centers. Um, we, we wouldn't, I'm understanding we could do it as special. Uh, special access, uh, special exception use, uh, however. I'm not comfortable with that, I, it's gray for me, um, how do you do it as, uh, a special exception or special condition use? Or conditional use, if there's nothing in your ordinance that even touch remotely tou, touches data mining? So, may I present you guys an ordinance on. Uh, data mining centers that are next, a moratorium for, uh, data, data. I'm, I'm tired, boys and girls, um, um, but yes, um. A moratorium for data mining centers, um.
All right, send us out a, uh, I would say yes, I mean, we can only say yah or nay, but check us out some information that you have in an email. And, uh, what it consists of a little bit, um, when you say that. I don't know if we're involved in, uh, data or AI or whatever, it's, it's a, it's a monster.
It could be either. But however, you know, we don't, there's a lot of industries, we don't regulate well in our county. And this would probably be one of them, I mean.
Well, there's a lot of new industries out there.
That weren't around ten years ago.
I mean, we certainly look to update and better ourselves, going, moving forward, and we're doing the best we can. So again, uh, be patient, and I would say yes, bring it forward, and we can certainly discuss it, and I mean, I guess, you know, we were out. Des Moines and you were out there also, and to listen to this AI stuff is. Theory and it's there, it's there.
It's there and, um. Yeah, it doesn't.
We don't wanna get behind the eight ball and.
Right, well, a better move.
I appreciate you thinking about it and, and we'll agree with it, yes.
Thank you, can I just add a couple other points about last night's meeting? You guys wanna come talk to me, um, you can, um, I'd appreciate it, just, um, to kind of give you some of the highlights that. You know, individually, please, uh, just give you some of the highlights that are, that came out of last night's meeting with the, the wind ordinance. Um. We did move the meeting last night, we kept it in the building, but we moved to a large courtroom. We had, we believe probably about fifty people, not all of them signed in, um, in our August meeting, that is. And then I started hearing grumblings how more people were gonna show up, so it's like, that room in the basement was not big enough for the meeting that we had. In August, so we moved it upstairs and, um. We had a very, very small attendance, lots smaller than we would have expected. Uh, we, we had, you know, our public notices out in the papers, all that was done, we just, um. An error, I mean, not that it's required by law, but as a rule, we try to get our agenda on our county website. That, that happened, but not till yesterday morning, so, but, you know, moving forward. It was there after we realized it didn't make it. Stop it, don't go there. Michael, I'm not, I'm not going there.
Uh, you didn't say nothing.
So, you know, and, uh, it, it's a, okay, it's a learning experience, everything we do. Has a learning curve, and if you guys saw our checklist. For one of our Board of Adjustment or Zoning Commission meetings, does it spread to, under the second page of our spreadsheet? Oh, yeah, we had, it's, there's just so many minute things that have to happen, so it's, it's a learning, there's a learning curve. It's all good, oh, I'm fine, I'm, I'm good, she's good. Uh, so anyway, the public notices were done timely, and all that happened like it was supposed to. Uh, there was some mix-ups, um, people thought it was next week, which typically it would be the third Monday of the month. So, um, however, we had, we have four board members or commission members that won't be available in a, um, in September due to vacations. Uh, and instead of waiting till October to have a meeting, we moved it up a week to yesterday. Due to the fact we had a zoning case that really needed to be heard, was the one that went before the zoning commission back in March of twenty-three. The, our US Army Corps of Engineers finally in June, fifteen months later. Gave these people the authorization to put in an additional drain pipe to get runoff off the lot, so. I did not feel it was right to make that property owner wait an additional month. Um, since we weren't gonna meet in September and the zoning commission agreed. That, that they would still meet in September, just move the date ahead, so.
Talked about this drainage pipe a year ago.
I know, I know, but they passed it again, so it'll come before you guys again, we just have to get all the. Uh, final plating stuff done before we come to you guys with that, so that'll be another couple weeks.
Again, understand that the individuals have investments here and they have things going on, and, and they get tied up in the paperwork and. Regulations and whatnot, so we try to minimize what we can.
We did, we did, um, we got him in there six weeks sooner than he'd have to wait.
Appreciate it.
So. Any other questions or concerns from my office? Good.
Hey, have a great day.
Thank you, guys, I hope to visit with you guys.
Okay. Lisa.
This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-four board proceedings, as written by Honor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers, so moved.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-four board proceedings. And published, written by Honor Smith and published in the official newspapers, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of seven hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
Almost.
A motion and second to approve the claims, uh, warrants and claims publication of the claims in the amount of seven hundred and. in the amount of seven hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Just a note, there was a new four hundred and fifty thousand dollar maintainer and uh about a hundred thousand dollars in rock in secondary roads. So uh again, that was proven with a lot of secondary roads, just a, just an update. And I've been told that the new maintainer is going to the spring workshop. And there might be a slight learning curve with the joysticks and whatnot. And that was a.
Joe, you assist.
Um, it's a, it's a caterpillar. So we haven't had a cat for a while. That was the information I would relay. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Need a motion to approve resolution number ten sixty-five dash zero nine dash ten dash two thousand and twenty-four dispersing seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents in federal flood control revenues collected from leased properties along the Mississippi River. And according to our resolution, it reads that the law mandates that sixty-five percent of the funds shall be allocated to schools in these uh flood district areas. Twenty-five percent of the funds should be allocated to secondary roads and ten percent of the funds shall be allocated to fire departments.
We move.
Okay.
A motion and second to approve the resolution number ten sixty-five dash zero nine dash ten dash two thousand and twenty-four. As presented, any further discussion? We appreciate that uh brief explanation, and this is um core land if I take it along uh the rivers.
Correct.
Just if anybody has any question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you. And Luanne?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar for this week. Um, tomorrow, September eleventh at nine AM, um, it will be Don's turn of leave on Just Talk. We had a little discussion about that, but I think it is Don's turn. Uh, one o'clock. One o'clock tomorrow, um, is zero to five and sixty minutes advisory committee meeting by Zoom for NIM. And at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon is the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting for any of you that want to attend that. Thursday, September twelfth at eleven AM is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. And at noon is the Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting uh by Zoom for any of you that might go to that. Mike usually attends those. Friday, September thirteenth at ten AM is a seventh judicial um Department of Corrections Advisory Committee meeting by Google Meet Only for NIM. Make sure that's on your um iPad. Uh, the one o'clock meeting for DCAT has been canceled. She's looking for a new date for that. Monday, September sixteenth, um, the Waste Authority meeting that's on there um has been moved. It will be on the twenty-third of September instead. At three o'clock is an Eastern Iowa M H D S meeting in Davenport for Jack, and I think NIM often attends those as well as the alternate. Five thirty Monday, the sixteenth is Together We Build um Inc. to board meeting uh for Don, followed by the Together We Build Steering Committee meeting for NIM. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, September seventeenth at nine AM. That afternoon at three thirty is a McHocan River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. Um, at five o'clock that afternoon, um, uh, I tend to have a conservation board meeting. I don't have a place for that yet. But for any of you, but NIM often attends those. And at six o'clock, um, is the Jackson County Economic Communes meeting um here in McHocan or by Zoom for Don. I believe that's all I have for you.
So on Thursday at the Jackson County Area Tourism Meeting, I do have another commitment today. If anybody else would like to jump on and zoom in, it's mostly informational. Um, sometimes they'll add, of course, the updates for the county, but uh good to sit in on if you have time, I guess, so. Sit and listen a little bit. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, boards of commission reports. Uh, we did have a municipal league meeting uh last week, and again, it was fairly uh well attended. Uh, there's a lot of actual information that gets put out. Um, again, as to the EMA uh emergency planning and crime stoppers and such, so we learned a few things. We have gone to the point where there was not a a really good attendance in that from a lot of um conflict of time scheduling, I suppose, for everyone. So we want the legal mares to point somebody or have somebody show up for their representation. So that worked out pretty good. And again, there was a lot of information put out there. I don't have my notes in front of it. Uh, Monday morning was uh Prosperity Eastern Iowa regarding the Berry Creek Project, Trail Project, uh Disc Golf Project. Um, WHKS was there, um, presented their findings uh as far as um costs and such. So as expected.
And such.
The cost were a little more than than what what anticipated the first go around. Um, they had to change some design work uh far as drainage, regulations, DOT, DNR requirements, it's all gotta be followed. You're close to Highway sixty-four. DNR is involved, the DOT is involved. So yes, uh, estimates come back a little higher. We're gonna proceed with uh the bid process to see where we come in, see what we might have to eliminate. Um, uh, it's very interesting. So the original plans did not include very minimal funding for the Disc Golf Course, and that come in quite a bit higher um than what, you know, originally planned with our um local engineer. And um, it's it's exciting to listen about to it. It's uh, it's it's a really, they're really excited about the course and the aspects of of a lot of this. So we see where it proceeds. Uh, I think it'd be a huge asset for McHocan and and Jackson County. So we'll see how they come out with it. I know Mary and NIM, you were both there. Anything to add?
Oh, I mean, it sounds like, again, off the disc golf course side, the gentleman who's kind of looking it over is also an avid disc golf player, and he's like, you'll definitely bring people to town. Because there's very few par five courses and this has three par fives in its course. So.
I mean, he claims you'll bring them nationwide.
Yeah.
He said they're they're, they follow, they follow this stuff. And, you know, apparently we have uh several local residents that um travel.
I have a nephew that has like channel. He he says he has something like twenty thousand dollars in discs. He's got a tub of putters.
So tell me, so tell me, is any discs of Frisbee?
No. That's very good. I mean, they they these are kind of like saying, well, it's just a golf club. I mean, what's the difference between?
No, I get it. I don't.
It's not, you're just gonna go out to Tyson's and buy a Frisbee.
No, I get it.
You can.
Like you say, he has a plastic tote of putters that are discs, different discs that he uses for putting.
How far you want to throw.
The bung range.
So my point is very interesting and I, and I made the comment. So you tell me that most courses are par threes. You said most poles are par threes. So there's several par fives on this course. I says, give me an idea, how far is a par five? Is it three hundred yards? Is it five hundred yards?
Ask Bjorn, ask Bjorn.
How far do you think it is?
I thought.
I haven't. A par five is a thousand feet.
Well, he said about about, yeah, three hundred yards, if you will. So three football fields or four football fields, whatever you want. So with obstacles, of course, and I I'm I'm looking at, boy, it'd take me a long time to throw a disc from five hundred yards, but I. That's what you're saying. But it's very interesting to see and to know that uh it's up and coming also. I mean, you you can go back to the pickleball, all that went gray wire and uh, but it's interesting to have a a place, I mean, they'll travel.
And you think they'll travel weekends.
Yeah, they'll.
And you'll get tournaments come in and which, again, will all create tourism for Jackson County.
Well, you know, I guess, again, we we were taking baby steps here. We went, we went through that process years ago and had a a conversation, a public hearing of of the campground and the cabins and whatnot, and it it all comes back to money. You know, you gotta have funding. So uh we take baby steps and we'll see what we can do, so.
But going along with this, then you also have a recreational walking trail, biking trail.
Which is gonna be very nice.
That will all tie in and it will.
Have your water restoration, if it will, and and.
You'll cross a creek or creek, however you say it.
So again, yeah, it's 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 improvement. I mean, there's a nice, it was a nice donation to the conservation and we hope to utilize the best of our ability with.
There's still, there's some grants to go with it to try that.
Yeah, so there's some other grant writing that needs to be done and um a couple other things that we need to discuss and.
You know, and it's a joint venture with the city and the county.
Sure. Conservation and.
Conservation and.
Any other reports?
Tagged that last week and pretty much just pointing down, we had reports from uh uh the RTA as far as, you know, cooperations with the the farmers market and different things and activities around town and how it's going in Jackson County. Um, they do have their, they did go over a report. They, it's kind of like an annual filing and uh different things they gotta tweak out, but it's kind of one of those things that you need to prove every year, but other than that, it's good.
Kind of had a quiet week.
Well, good. No, I mean, there's always something you can um get into or meetings that you can sit in on, and many of them are uh pretty informational or if you get involved, so. Appreciate it. Any other business?
Do you want to say anything about the air conditioning?
About what?
Air conditioning for the building or?
Well, the update, we just got an update the this morning for maintenance. It's ongoing. Uh, again, he's looking for all the information that we can obtain and make the best logical decision for us. We know. And again, I'm gonna appreciate all the, all the uh employees that we have here and the department heads for putting up with it. We thought uh we were on the cutting edge of getting by for the fall when it was seventy degrees, but uh come Wednesday and Thursday, we're looking at ninety again. So again, we appreciate all they're doing. Um, we're looking at several different options, whether we we need to replace an aging unit chiller or replace the compressor, if you will, put a Band-Aid on it, uh or have a backup unit. So again, a lot of, a lot of consideration needs to go into, um, it's it's not a cheap fix, I should say. Um, I would call it a cheap fix, but um hopefully all, everyone is on board and and we appreciate from department heads input also. So I did look to see who all that update went out to, but maintenance is working on it, ongoing, so. We will not, I will tell you this, we will not have air conditioning this week.
No, that is.
And a reminder to everybody about the jail open house on the twenty-first. I'm bound to three ribbon cutting at.
That's correct. And we expect a good turnout.
There's a lot of things going on the twenty-first.
Yeah, there is. We expect.
Everybody be out and about, so you might as well swing by.
Yeah, we expect people to take a look at this. Uh, we don't want you to visit after it's open. So if you know what I mean.
There's Friends of the Caves Pancake Breakfast from nine to one that day. I think McToberfest is going on that day.
Um, on the green space?
Green space, the open house.
Or something else, yeah.
Well, there's personal things like my brother loves getting addicted, some will go to the Cascade Hall of Fame that day. Um, my great kid's birthday party. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be hectic, so.
Any other business before the board?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned.